...the business of changing things and spending hundreds of millions of dollars on their facilities, or even billions of dollars?
No, most major airports have a recurring investment plan that's every five years, pretty regular, going to the bond market. This is a long stretch by any measure of major airports between investment.
All right, and when we're gonna do these bonds, I liken it to, for example, your average person might buy a house, and then over thirty years they'll pay off that house on monthly payments. Is that kinda like what happens when we put bonds out and you get this $950 million to do this work? What, do you pay the payments little by little over many years?
Yes, the repayment of the bonds, or the equivalent of a mortgage, is paid over thirty years, usually out of rates and charges paid by the users of the airport.
Okay, and then where does the airport get the money to pay off the bonds over thirty years, or what have you?
Mostly from charges like landing fees, in the case of the South Airfield, and rents in the Tom Bradley International Terminal. But from use of the airport, we generate income. It's all generated on LAX.
Okay, so, this $950 million in bonds, the person on a fixed income who's renting a house in Pacoima, another person who's on a fixed income who happens to own their house, thank God outright, their property taxes aren't gonna go up, their sales taxes when they go to the store aren't gonna go up, or anything like that?
Correct.
Correct. So basically, who's gonna be impacted by these fees? Who's gonna be writing the checks, or what have you, that's gonna see their checks to the LAX get a little bigger?
It'll largely be the airlines at the airport who are paying the bills that go with these improvements.
Okay, so my next question is, should these airlines be outraged, or what have you? I mean, are LA fees gonna be ten times what they are at San Francisco or Denver's airport? Are we gonna be in line with their fees? Are we still gonna be below the average fees for the industry? Where are we gonna be with these fees? They're gonna be adjusted based on this?
LAX is below average in terms of the cost to the using airlines, largely because of the lack of investment you identified earlier. And the airlines know this is coming, they are not outraged at all. I think the airlines, to give them credit, in difficult economic times, they've said that if it's an improvement at the airport, we understand we have to pay for it, and it's gonna be on their bill.
Okay. One of the things, I happen to be fortunate to travel in different parts of the country, I traveled around the world, and I specifically have looked at airports and what they've done over the years, and how they've innovated, and I must say, I'm ashamed at the fact that the LAX Airport, this world-renowned international airport, the airport that the people around the world and around the country come to when they wanna come to Hollywood, and they wanna see the glamorous city of Los Angeles, LAX is not glamorous by any means, is it?
It does not meet the standard of a large international gateway airport at all.
And do we have airports that have been renovated here on the west coast of the United States, or in the United States, or around the world, say, in the last five or six years, that they've invested billions of dollars? And are those airports more glamorous than LAX?
Almost every major gateway airport around the world has done investments in the last ten years, and they have better facilities than we do.
So they look better, they function better, their, the airlines enjoy them better because their customers pass through there and probably have more smiles on their faces because they've experienced it, right?
I think generally the airlines are happy at most of those airports.
Okay. The reason why I wanted to go through that is because I wanna make sure that the people of Los Angeles understand, $950 million sounds like a lot of money, and it sounds like we're gonna be dipping into their pockets, or what have you, to pay for this stuff, but we're not gonna be dipping into people's pockets. The airlines are gonna absorb that with the fees, they're gonna be adjusted, and even at that, LAX's fees are not gonna be above average, LAX's fees are gonna be well within what airlines are expected to pay in fees in other airports comparable and otherwise around the country and around the world. So I wanted to make sure that people understood that. But more importantly, what am I holding in my hands right here? What does this chart tell us?
That chart is a summary or comparison of major airports, and the amount of outstanding bonds they have per in-plane passenger, like a debt per capita for a general obligation bond issuer. That shows what those airports, including LAX, have for outstanding debt. The blue bar that is on the left represents LAX after the bond issue that we're talking about here. So before the bond issue, it's a sliver down the bottom of...
Yeah, people on the screen couldn't even see LAX, it's the little blue one right here, before this $950 million investment.
Correct.
And the reason why I wanna point that out is because Angelenos should be urging us to go ahead and make this investment, and Angelenos, I think, need to understand that this should be the first of many investments to the tune of billions of dollars to get their airport, because this airport belongs to the people of LA, right? It doesn't belong to some company.
No.
This airport belongs to the city of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles belongs to the people of Los Angeles, and we need to bring this airport, our airport, up to the standards that we can be proud of. And right now, it's not. And I wanna thank you, your group, at LAX, who's working on this, for all the wonderful work that you've done to bring this forward, and finally get us to jump into the right direction and get going on the kinds of bonds that we need to see here.
Pointing to dilapidated facilities at LAX and stating her view on why this bond issue is key for improvements at LAX, District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn acknowledges that everyone's a little nervous about the economy and wants to know if this is a good time to go to market.
I think, as Tony alluded to at the end of your first round of questioning, was that, you know, really, this is about the big picture. This is about modernizing LAX, this is about Tom Bradley International Terminal, this is about making sure we get the backside gates at some point. I mean, this is really about issuing these bonds to have the kind of money we need for the capital improvements and modernization of LAX. This is key. We haven't done this in a while, this is significant, this is historic. This says to everyone, the airline industry, as well as, you know, everyone else who's watching, that we're serious, and we're doing it. And part of this, as we talked about, was a little bit of a reimbursement to LALA forefronting the money for some of these projects, which I applaud. I always applaud our proprietary departments for going ahead and outlaying the capital to make some of these improvements in the beginning, and then getting a small amount of these bonds are gonna be reimbursed for that. We talked a little bit, but you might wanna talk to the audience that's listening and watching as well, why we're doing this as a negotiated effort as opposed to a competitive bond.
Okay, I think the key factor, one of which Mr. Gardiner's mentioned a moment ago, is that LAX has not been in the bond market for a very long time, and our credit hasn't been tested. We will have to meet with the rating agencies to go over our credit worthiness, which I think will come out fine.
Los Angeles International Airport is located in Council District 11, and is represented by Bill Rosendahl, who explains why he believes the airport is so overcrowded, and why he's in favor of modernization.
And the bottom line is, I'm the airport guy, with Westchester and Playa del Rey, most concerned about everything that goes on at LAX. What the viewer needs to really understand is, the reason everybody goes to LAX, non-stop direct frequent and discounted flights, because the airlines don't go to Ontario and other places. Why? Because LAX is the cheapest takeoff and landing of a metropolitan airport in America. So they collect their monies and their bucks by, no matter where they start, be it in Miami, or New York, or Chicago, or Dallas, by the time they get to LA, it's the cheapest. And that is because we have not modernized that airport since 1983. Because when we make a project, we complete it, we pass it on, in a formula sense, to the airlines, and their M&amp;O costs go up. And that's natural, that's part of modernization. So the really good news, and I say to my Westchester folks who watch this and are very concerned about expansion, modernization, yes, expansion, no. And as we do the modernization, those costs will be passed on to the airlines. Then all of a sudden, Ontario, which is twelve bucks to land roughly, versus the seven at LAX, will begin to look attractive to that. Because the lies I've heard from the major airlines is, there's no market there, baloney. We're twenty-five million people, the immodest empire would rather go to Ontario. Orange County, which is fourteen percent of LAX, would rather go from Anaheim to Ontario. All this becomes a reality, ladies and gentlemen, once we spend that money at LAX to modernize. So today is a historic moment, colleagues. It's $900 million kicking off the modernization of LAX, the Bradley Terminal, the South Airfield, and then we get ready for the other projects, the people mover, the consolidated rental, the midfield terminal, the tidbit backing of that with contact gates, and the green line. The reason I push the green line so hard, which MTA board members need to wake up and understand, I'm not fighting over their crumbs on a little pie, what I'm talking about is building the stub into the airport for every other light rail system that Southern California someday will produce. When we're spending the billions and creating the architecture, that's the time to put the aviation century stop, that's the time to do the parking lot c, and put it into the people mover. So the day comes when everybody else's dreams become reality, the mayor's subway to the sea, the Expo Line to Santa Monica, the Crenshaw Line, the Harbor Line, all these things happen, there will already be at LAX, a light rail. And I might say, most major metropolitan airports in America are putting a light rail into their airport. So, the Green Line is the project that I'm passionate about, that's a mile and a half away due to the numnutses in the nineties who stopped it there in 1994. We're bringing that in as part of the overall master plan.
Concerned about the number of studies that have been done with nothing being accomplished, District 3 Councilmember Dennis Zein wants to know if this bond issue will eventually get something built, and if there will be any impact on the city's general fund.
I have a couple of questions regarding the expenditure.
Okay.
To this date, there has been millions of dollars spent on LAX, and nothing's been accomplished. There's been study after study after study, and can you tell me how many millions we've spent on studies, to this point?
I don't have a specific number. I know the number resides somewhere between $150 million and $200 million of studies to deal with master planning and permitting.
And are those being pushed aside for new studies? My focus on this, we can study this thing forever, and I go to LAX when I have to fly, which is obviously an uncomfortable experience for most travelers.
Yes.
We've invested in all these studies, the consultants make a lot of money, the passengers don't see any improvement. So my concern, we're gonna float these bonds, we're gonna repay some, we're gonna buy off some, we're gonna have some money put aside, how much of that are we gonna actually get to do some improvement to the facility, versus more consultants, and more studies, and more trees torn down?
The number of studies that are going on right now is pretty limited. They are simply the environmental implementation studies that get us the permits to build things. Those are the ones we're focused on right now, the project-specific environmental assessments. But there aren't, there's not another round of master planning studies going on, that's done.
So we're actually investing in something, we're gonna see something built, something modified, something renovated, some improvement to the facility?
Yeah, we are doing some of that now, but it's hard for the public to see it, because it's sort of behind the wall or on the airfield, but there's more in the pipeline that we're ready to do, subject to getting these, you know, environmental permits that we need to get. But there's not a revisitation of what we're going to build, which is what was going on during the period where the planning studies seemed to be endless.
And it was, a lot of people made a lot of money, as you mentioned some numbers, but for the passengers, there was no improvement seen. Also, the notes say that there's not gonna be any general fund impact, that airport revenue, fund obligations will not constitute an obligation to city or the general fund, enable the Department of Airports to refinance prior revenue bonds, et cetera. So there's no impact on the general fund, no liability on general fund.
There is none.
And if something doesn't go right, it's not gonna come back on the city of Los Angeles, it will be strictly up to the airport to resolve.
That is correct.
So you can assure, how long you been there?
I've only been there since January.
Did you fly in from another place?
I worked in Washington DC.
So you flew...
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles. And welcome to the city council meeting for Friday, June 13th, Friday the 13th, 2008. I want to thank the council members that are here, Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Han, Mr. Labange, Ms. Perry, and Mr. Wesson, and ask the following council members to come down as soon as possible. Mr. Wezar, if you'll join us, Mr. Parks, if you'll join us, Mr. Rosendahl, if you will join us, we will begin the meeting shortly. Thank you all for your patience.
This is a quorum call for Mr. Wezar, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Garcetti, would you like to do your presentation while we're waiting to achieve quorum?
Absolutely, that would be wonderful.
We're going to have a little quiet in the chambers so that we can hear Mr. Garcetti's presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and be joined here by Councilmember Alarcon, and I know Mr. Wezar is coming as well shortly, so sure he will be joining us too. It gives me great joy to present to the City of Los Angeles, somebody who is already a great friend of ours, the new Consul General of Mexico, Juan Marcos Gutierrez. As we know, Los Angeles is the second-largest city in the world of people of Mexican origin, and the friendship between our cities extends back not just to recent years, but obviously from the founding of our cities, our common Spanish heritage, as we see the flags that fly over that give us a sense of the history here, that it's not only been an American city, and a Spanish city, but a Mexican city as well in our past. Consul General of Mexico in Los Angeles, Juan Marcos Gutierrez, was appointed by President, President, excuse me, I've got to say it in English here at first, Felipe Calderon, and was ratified by the Mexican Congress on February 14th, 2008, Valentine's Day this year, I should note. Prior to this posting, Consul General Gutierrez was Coordinator General for the Anti-Corruption Agency in Mexico within the Secretary of the Public Function. This was an extremely important position, obviously, the ongoing efforts within Mexico to tackle corruption and to make sure that the laws of democracy are abided by is one of the, I think, strongest messages and one of the most powerful accomplishments of recent years, and our new Consul General has been squarely at the center of that. He was Consul General, though, in the United States previously in Denver, and we were speaking in the back during the reception we just had about some of his interesting issues that he had to tackle when he was in Denver. It's also where he met his wife, Alejandra, who is here with us as well. He was Consul General in Denver from 2004 to 2006, but also, I want to say, colleagues, he's one of us. He's a local official by training, and I think understands the importance of trying to fight for local government to have national recognition. He holds a degree in law from the Autonomous University of Baja California, where he's also Professor of Constitutional Law. He has postgraduate certificates in financial trade dispute resolution and fiscal law, and he's also taught constitutional law at the Universidad de la Americana and the Instituto Tecnológico de Estudios Superiores de Monterrey. After receiving his law degree, Gutierrez served as City Attorney of Tijuana, and it was nice to have our City Attorney join us at the reception, Rocky Delgado, so he was the City Attorney in Tijuana from 1992 to 95, and Secretary General of Government of Tijuana, Baja California, from 1995 to 1997. And he also served as a federal congressman in the PAN party, in the Chamber of Deputies, from 1997 to 2000. And during his tenure as congressman, he was President of the Chamber of Deputies, Chair of the Chamber's Commission for Municipal Development, and Chair of the Commission of Impeachment Proceedings. It was there that he really fought hard for local governments to have increased funding and autonomy, and it's certainly a battle that we wage here all the time as well in Los Angeles. And from 2000 to 2001, Consul General Gutierrez served as Chief of Advisors in the Mexican Federal Senate. He was also General Director of the Institute for the Technical Development of Public Finance, a national think tank that is dedicated to study and the development of fiscal federalism and public finances in Guadalajara from 2001 to 2003. Could go on and give you even more from his resume, and I know Mr. Reyes is going to come and join us as well, but I think what I've been most impressed by is here, just like we have to serve constituents, the Consul General of Mexico has a lot of constituents to serve. And his emphasis in a short time here in Los Angeles has been on service. How can we better serve the men and women who come seeking consular help, seeking issues which we have to coordinate between our governments, and already he has been able to put that emphasis on customer service, which is the hallmark of what we try to do here in Los Angeles, and is extremely impressive to see as well coming from the consulate. So with that, let me actually defer to Mr. Reyes, who where the consulate resides in the First District, then we'll hear from Mr. Alarcon, but it is a great joy to present our new Consul General and to have him here as a friend for Los Angeles. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Consul President. It is a pleasure to be here, and thank you, Consul, for sharing this time with us, I know you're very busy. We have a city that is an international city, and so the presence of the Consul, given our times today that are so trying, given our immigrant experience, and given how we are trying to make sure that we can all become great Americans, much like my parents who are immigrants, we establish our roots, and we continue to contribute to this great country, and it's with the Consul's help that we can nourish that confidence, nourish that sense of pride to be in a place where our umbilical cords can continue to nourish each other's communities. And, Consul, I'm just speaking with you and having a meeting with you already, we talked about these urgencies, so I thank you for your spirit, your positive attitude, and the fact that we understand what's at stake, the future of this country, the future of Mexico, and quite frankly, the future of this world, as we continue to demonstrate how we can work together, and it's done and personified with your presence. Thank you so much.
I too am very, very honored to welcome the newest, one of the newest Consul Generals to Los Angeles. I think the Consul General Corps is a group that goes largely unnoticed in the general public. However, they provide a vital service to Los Angeles, particularly in that we are such a community of immigrants, and they are essential to the opportunities that our constituents will have, and so we work closely with them. Since President Garcetti took all of my notes, I will just like to offer some personal comments. It's been my pleasure to have the rotating chairmanship of the 16th of September celebration, El Grito, and in that capacity, I'm working with the Consul to create a new kind of event. We will celebrate, we will have the festivities and the music, but we will, in addition, create a conference, and this was the Consul's idea, to have a conference to talk about what does the struggle for independence and what does democracy mean in today's world, and how do the common histories of struggle for independence of Mexico and the United States merge together in this place we call Los Angeles. And so I'm looking forward to working in that capacity with the Consul General to put together a program that will be educational, so that people won't think that the El Grito Celebration is just about wine and beer and having a party. It's a significant event in the history of Mexico and in the Americas, and it should be recognized in this community because so many of the people that reside here are, have their heritage in Mexico. I would also like to say that we have an interesting sort of personal experience. The Consul General and his wife recently, five months ago, had a baby girl. I obviously had a baby girl. Carolina is five months old, Camila is four months old, and Mr. Wezar's son is three and a half, I think, three months and three weeks old, and so we will perhaps watch our kids grow up together, but I wanted to say that the Consul General's wife was actually born in the United States, in Houston, Texas. My wife was born in Colima, Mexico, and I think that there's something to that, I haven't figured it out yet, but I have a feeling it is symbolic of the blending of the two communities as we come together into one unified force to better the Western Hemisphere. And so I wish you well, and I'm looking forward to working with you on the El Grito Celebration.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti, I believe Mr. Wezar and Mr. Labange would like to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Madam President, Consul General, and I want to welcome you to Los Angeles, but you really don't need no welcoming, you know Los Angeles very well, and welcome to your wife, and we're very happy to have you here, and we know how important this job is. As the city with the most Mexicans than any other city next to Mexico City, the importance of this job and the relationships we build, whether it's immigration or responsiveness for city services, your job is so important to us, and I like the fact that we've seen you all over the city already, because you are making a mark, you're getting to know people. Just yesterday, we were at a hospital in Boyle Heights where we opened up a cleft palate program for young people, to get those operations and surgeries they need to bring them smiles to young people. And it's things like that that you're making a mark, reaching out, letting people know who you are, that's going to make a big difference when we really need to get in there and do the hard work. So thank you, really happy to have you, I look forward to working with you, and as a Mexican-born person myself, from, I always promote my state, Zacatecas, it's an honor to be here with you and to work together to improve the lives of not only Mexicans, but all Angelinos, because after all, we're very proud of our diversity, and we understand that if LA, in order for it to be successful, we have to support our cultures, welcome everyone, and let everyone know, and give them a part of the pie in Los Angeles. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wezar, Mr. Labange.
This podium here, Consul General Gutierrez and his lovely wife and family, welcome to Los Angeles again. We were so treated with the Mexico City Philharmonic last Friday evening at Disney Concert Hall, which was a wonderful program for our Sister City Program of Mexico City, which has been rejuvenated by Mayor Antonio Villagosa, and we're very excited about that, and your conductor was so tremendous, who remind me a little of Mick Jagger and a little of one of the members of the Grambling Marching Band, he was so enthusiastic and everyone loved it. But music, art, and culture are histories crossed, it's so important, I look forward to working with you. Our city hosts over 100 consuls because of its dynamic diversity, and we certainly look forward to working with you, and if you're free on Wednesday night, we have our annual hike up to Mount Hollywood, salute the Consul Corps, I'll make sure that you get another invitation for that. Welcome, Consul General Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and now back to you, Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, appreciate that. Buenos Tardes. Buenos dias! Buenos Tardes is the night. You see, this is the kind of guy that needs to know more about Mexico, you see. But I will tell you, I go every year, I've been going to Mexico for a long, long time. You know, your country and our country are joined at the hip, and a lot of our groups that truly are the baseline of our economy and our culture are Mexican-Americans, Americans or Mexicans or both, and we all know, if we know our history, that the whole missions up and down the coast of California were Mexican. This was part of Mexico, and then we had the great expansion of the Lewis and Clark, and boy, we got into all this other politics and created borders, and then all of a sudden, you know, it's them people, when it's really us people, and we're all together as a human race, working closely together, and on the city council, I'm honored to have colleagues who are Latino, who are Mexican, history and culture and blood, because that's what we are in Los Angeles altogether, and so it's an honor to welcome you here, and I look forward to the continued strong partnership between California and especially Los Angeles and your great country. Thank you, welcome here.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Now back to you, Mr. Garcetti, and to the Consul General.
Would I like to present our new Consul General? Please give a warm welcome to Juan Marcos Gutierrez.
Mr. Garcetti, before he speaks, Mr. Parks wanted to speak. There's a problem with the computer right now, so I'm going to have to ask the members to give me a visual cue, so I can see that you want to speak. Mr. Parks and Ms. Han, you want to speak also? Okay, Mr. Parks and then Ms. Han, I'm sorry.
No worries.
No.
Press the screen.
Thank you, Madam President. Consul General Gutierrez Gonzalez, thank you for being here today. I represent an area that has a very large population of Latinos, particularly Mexican-Americans, and they also represent a large number of our first-time homebuyers, and also a large number of our entrepreneurs in the community, and so we look forward to working with you as it relates to their well-being, and certainly look forward for you being a part of the Eighth District and coming out and being a part of that community, and so we welcome you here and your wife and family, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Han, and then Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, and good morning, and I just wanted to add my bit of welcome to the Consul General Gutierrez Gonzalez. Two names there. And I loved it when you came to my office earlier, and we had an opportunity to talk about a lot of things, and one of the reasons I think you're going to do such a good job, particularly with us, is you were an elected official in your previous life, and you know what it means to be elected by the people, you know what it means to represent your people, and I know that you will understand politics and why things happen as they do, but I also loved when you and I talked about, one of the things that I am most interested in, and that's the problem of gang violence in Los Angeles, and you and I talked about what we believe is the way to rid Los Angeles of gang violence, and that's preventing kids from joining gangs in the first place, and later on, we're going to have a presentation, thank you. We're going to have a presentation of women in film who actually did a public service announcement about that very subject, of keeping our kids from joining gangs in the first place, and I will count on you to work with me on coming up with ways to give our young people in Los Angeles positive alternatives to joining gangs in the first place, and I know we share that passion, and I wish you well in your position here in Los Angeles, and anything we can do to help you, we stand ready to support you and partner with you as you do your job.
Thank you, Ms. Han, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. Mr. Consul General, it's my understanding that technically I am your Consul Person, so I want you, I want you to know, if I can be of any service, to please don't hesitate to call on me, and I look forward to cultivating a relationship with you. I anticipate that you will do a wonderful job, and we are excited. But now, I don't know if you know that we have a tradition here in the City of Los Angeles that I've started, when we have guests, distinguished guests like yourself that come here, we want to give you something that's special, so lift Sampson. So we're going to give you, we're going to give you Sampson. No, no. Now, now, I will say this, I will say this, every other Friday, every other Friday, Mr. Consul General, I find a home for dogs from our city animal services, and today I have Sampson with me, and later in the day, I was going to try to get somebody here, but when I saw you and I saw your wife, it just seemed to me that it was a match made in heaven. So I want to welcome you to Los Angeles.
Is that an American flag around Sampson's neck? I think if you change it to a Mexican one, he might take it home.
And that we can do. Anyway, welcome, and I'm really excited, and I want to get together with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson, and now to you, Mr. Consul General, this is your time.
We have already two dogs, and we're willing to take three, and the third, and she, she, you took, you have those dogs from the pound, and of course, we will be gladly accepting that.
Come on, Sampson.
That poke. Is that a she or he?
Thank you, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you. Should I look?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, please, please.
I think you missed your caller. Thank you. Honorable Eric Garcetti, President of the City Council of Los Angeles, California, honorable Consul Members of this great City of Los Angeles, honorable City Government Officials, honorable Members of the Press. It is with great honor that I am standing here this morning before the City Council of Los Angeles. Southern California and the City of Los Angeles is very close to my heart and my life since I grew up nearby, right here on the border, in the City of Tijuana. As a lawyer, former congressman, and government official, I had the chance in the past to have a very important relationship with the City of Los Angeles and the Angelinos. Nevertheless, it does not compare to be the Consul General representing the government of a great country in a great, great city. The importance of the relationship between Mexico and Los Angeles relies not only on the strong economic ties. As you know, just last year, we traded $3.6 billion both ways, just Mexico and the City of Los Angeles. But the social, cultural, political, and friendship relations are stronger than ever, and add a particular ingredient to our everyday relation. The City of Los Angeles is not only a great city, but a unique one. It is a city that really greets visitors and embraces people from all over the world, a city that never forgets its history and the past, but focuses brightly into the future. In this, the Mexican government, through the Mexican consulate in Los Angeles, wants to join the city's efforts through one simple but strategic phrase, friendship and cooperation. The size of the Mexican community living in Los Angeles has no parallel with any of our Mexican diasporas abroad. Mexicans are hardworking and talented people who have come here looking for a better life, reuniting with their families, and helping build many good things for the Los Angeles community. Immigration phenomenon is an issue that Mexico and the United States should address through the through the principle of shared responsibility. Migration is always good when it happens in an orderly, legal, and humane fashion. President Kennedy once said that if someone wanted to write the story of immigration in America, soon they will find out that immigrants are the history of America. I want to thank the city of Los Angeles and Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa for the leadership and the policy for which they stand in the topic of immigration. One that recognizes the dignity of persons, the importance of families, and most of all, that cares about its neighbor, its partner, and its friend: Mexico. I can assure you that Mexico is in the path of structural reform aimed to improve quality of life and to remove extreme poverty from our country. It is a monumental task. President Calderon is committed to creating conditions in Mexico so nobody emigrates due to lack of opportunities or the chance to live a life with dignity. That should not be the cause of immigration in the 21st century. At the same time, Mexico is giving a fight like never before against organized crime, assuming it's part of responsibility, but in a problem of international nature. In that sense, we greet the progress in the legislative initiative, the Merida Initiative, reached so far in the U.S. Congress that recognize this effort in Mexico. Here again, a very good example of what our countries can do through dialogue and cooperation. Being myself a border kind of person with a Mexican-American wife and three daughters who appreciate the same mariachi music as they are fans of the Jonas Brothers, I don't know who these guys are. Kevin, Joe. I'm getting there. I can tell you because of that, that I've been working in the U.S.-Mexico relation for a while. But as Council General of Mexico and Los Angeles, I am facing my most important and difficult challenge in my professional and political career. I hope I will fulfill it with your help, guidance, and friendship. I know that Sacramento is the capital of California, but this city of Los Angeles, with its strength, leadership, opportunities, diversity, multicultural life, and great weather, it is actually the capital of the world. It is an honor to live and serve in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti?
And on behalf of this entire city, on the occasion of your time here, your visit with us, which we know will be a fruitful one, el pueblo de nuestra señora la arena de los ángeles y por su uncula, which is in here, and on behalf of this entire City Council, we welcome you and extend your congratulations on this position. We look forward to great things together. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Beautiful speech. We'll take some pictures.
Thank you very much. Now, before we go on to the next presentation, which will be Council District 7, Madam Clerk, can we quickly go through the agenda?
Alacon, Cardenas, Grill, Hahn, Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much. First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl moves. Ms. Hahn, seconds.
Next is commensary resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wesson moves. Mr. Parks, seconds.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comment?
Why don't we hold that for a bit and run through the agenda?
Items one through four are items which public hearings have been held.
All right. Are there any specials for us as we go through the agenda?
Madam President, item number three, there is an amending motion, but it has yet to be distributed.
All right, we'll hold that on the desk. Any other items?
Madam President, for item number one, that's a time limit filed. The last day for council to act is today. A motion must be made to whether to approve or not approve it.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
Item one is a time limit filed. The last date for council to act is today.
I believe that's without objection, so if you can open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next item.
Next are items five through eight, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, if you can open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next item.
Next is item number nine on the continuation agenda, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, please open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
Next is the special meeting, and I shall call the roll. It's Alacon, Cardenas, Grill, Hahn, Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum. Item number 10 is an item for which public hearing has been held, and there is a request to continue this item to June 18.
All right, that'll be without objection. Open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Very good.
Next are items 11 through 13, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on item number 12.
All right, we'll hear on item, we'll take those cards on 12. And the rest, open the roll on, Mr. Labonge.
Questionnaire on the special here, as we read the special here. Item number 10, have we already just passed that right now?
No, it's continued to next Wednesday, the 18th.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I'll have the special, please.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
The only thing that's left is 13 on the special agenda.
All right, there are no cards on that item?
No, there are not.
All right, great. All right, let's open the roll on that one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Madam President, should the items 11 through 12 be continued to regular agenda and the special meeting be adjourned?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, that brings council back to items called special.
All right, very good. And that is items 3, 11, and 12. All right, let's see if we can get through this. We have, first item up is item 3. We have a card from Arnold Sachs. Mr. Sachs, if you can come forward, please.
Could you please start my time to two minutes I'm allotted? Madam President, could you restart my time to two minutes that I'm allotted? Thank you for your attention, Madam President. Anyway, thank you for your attention. I'm concerned about this bond issue that's being discussed by the City Council, only because I'm curious to know, there's been several bonds issued by the city, most recently the one that was authorized for the L.A. airport, and I'm concerned about the steps being taken to make sure that they're issued in an open manner. There was a bond issued last year. There was some discussion regarding a bond that was issued when the CEO left the city employ, that the bond being issued, the way it was gonna be sent out, was gonna cost the city $17 million if it was issued one way, or maybe save the city $75,000 if it was issued another way. There is no information regarding issuance of this bond. There were some other bonds that were issued that had oversight expenses attached to them. There's no oversight expenses attached to these bonds to make sure that they're issued in a fair and open manner. So I'm just curious to know exactly how they're being issued. And also, I'm entitled to two minutes. The fact that the seating is the way it is...
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs, your time is up.
...is not my problem. Please allow me the two minutes that I'm allowed to speak.
Thank you very much. All right.
Madam President, the amending motion has not been distributed.
All right, well, then we'll have to hold this one on the desk until this one gets circulated. I thought it had already been circulated. All right, next item.
Next is item 11. That was called special by Council Member Rosendahl.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl, you're up.
Buenos dias. Buenos noches. Hello, everybody. Well, this item, folks, has to do with veterans, okay? I'm a veteran, and we don't give enough support to our veterans. In fact, this latest war we're in, where 1.7 million Americans have gone through it, 620,000 are coming back with one form of disability or another, and we have very little connection to services. You know, it's an embarrassment and a shame that we send people to war, but we don't take care of them when they come back. One out of four homeless, thank you. One out of four homeless folks eating out of the garbage cans are veterans. Okay, so what does this do? This gives a little perk and a little special appreciation of veterans. And so it's a good piece of legislation that Speaker Karen Bass, who I think is gonna be a historically great leader for us in California, has put forward. And I urge you and my colleagues to support this on behalf of veterans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. No further speakers in the queue. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and support this as well, and thank you to our local veteran of foreign war, Bill Rosendahl, who always represents our veterans in such a fine, gracious, respectful way. And this is one of those things I'm happy to support, because we hear the rhetoric, "support our troops." And yet, when they come home, we as a country have historically not supported them on so many levels. This, as you said, is a small gesture, a small token of a grateful society that we can do to support our war veterans. So I think this is great. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I'm happy to support our men and women who have served this country in this very small way. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. No further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll on this item. Oh, Mr. Parks, it's not, I'm sorry. Again, I have to rely on visual cues, because the computer is not working right now. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to rise also and thank the council for moving forward on this. It's a motion that came to our attention. It seems somewhat minor, but it's certainly important for those that are in uniform. But it goes hand in hand with a motion that we just passed that gives consideration for additional benefits for the Philippine community and military veterans in the Second World War, and then Ms. Hahn's motion a year ago about merchant seamen who had not gotten their benefits. So I think we've gone on record fairly clearly that supporting our military in addition to some of the other activities that we've done with our own city employees that have gone on their reserve duties to ensure that their salary and their family benefits have not been impacted. And so I'd ask that we have an aye vote on this. Again, it's a small token to let our veterans know that the city of Los Angeles support them.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. I think we can open the roll now on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Rosendahl. Okay, and then the next item is item...
Item number 12 is an item that has cards.
All right, the first speaker on this item will be the mayor of the city of Burbank, the Honorable David Golansky.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the Los Angeles City Council. I'm here today to ask you to reconsider the proposed position on the Part 161 study at the Bob Hope Airport. I believe very strongly that the proposed position and the resolution before you today is the wrong thing to do. This 11th-hour action, I believe, will be detrimental to your residents in a very strong way. I don't know whether you've really had the time to consider the ramifications of opposing an application for a curfew at the Bob Hope Airport when you are proceeding to prepare applications for similar noise restrictions at Van Nuys Airport and at Los Angeles. I would urge you to work together with us to provide reasonable noise relief for all of our residents. I would urge you to listen to your own homeowners' association, who have been working on this issue for a very, very long time, and understand what the ramifications of the position that you are proposing to take may have on the ability of all of us to provide that noise relief to all of our residents. We believe that the comments filed by Lawa threaten to undermine both the Part 161 efforts to protect Los Angeles residents near the Burbank Airport and those around Van Nuys Airport. This is not a zero-sum game. FAA can and should approve Part 161 plans for both airports. The negative comments give FAA an excuse to deny all of the Part 161 studies. I have sent you a letter today and a copy of a resolution that I'm gonna put forth before the Burbank City Council, asking them to support your efforts, and we ask you to support ours, so we can work together on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for being here in our chambers. We welcome you here.
Three is still on the desk, that's mine.
Don Fager is our next speaker.
Good morning, Madam, oh, good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. Little change there. My name is Dan Fager, and I am the interim executive director at the Bob Hope Airport. I urge you to vote no on this resolution opposing the Bob Hope Airport's efforts to obtain meaningful nighttime noise relief for over 170,000 Los Angeles residents that live in the Burbank Airport flight path. This resolution is based on an incorrect characterization of the proposed curfew at our airport. This resolution, if passed, will ultimately make it unlikely that any airport in Southern California, including your airports, can implement access restrictions to achieve net noise reduction. We don't think that's what you intend, but that's what you will cause if you pass this resolution. Implementation of a curfew at Bob Hope Airport will result in a net reduction in noise for L.A. residents. The less than one decibel shift in noise of Van Nuys must be contrasted with up to a six-decibel reduction in noise impacts in Sun Valley, North Hollywood, and other areas of L.A. and Burbank. Your passage of this resolution will effectively work against your own efforts to seek Part 161 access restrictions at your own airports. You will not be able to defend your own proposed access restrictions at Van Nuys and LAX, because they too will result in shifting of flights to other Southern California noise-impacted airports, and because you will have formally come out against the approach that your own Part 161 studies will have to take. Talk about shooting yourself in the foot with your own gun. I again urge you to vote no on this resolution and instead support the effort of Bob Hope Airport and the mayor of Burbank to pursue implementation of a curfew so that meaningful nighttime noise relief for hundreds of thousands of Los Angeles residents can become reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments as well today. Carl Puleitis is our next speaker. Then we will go to Van Nuys for Stephen Leffert, who will be our next speaker.
My name is Carl Puleitis. I am the president of the Burbank-Lundell-Pastin Airport Authority, the entity that operates the Bob Hope Airport. The Bob Hope Airport is located both within the city of Burbank and partially within the city of Los Angeles, and just under 200,000 residents of the city of Los Angeles are impacted by the flight paths from the Burbank Airport. Those same residents, both from the city of Los Angeles and from Burbank, have told us loud and clear that they would like a nighttime curfew, and that has been consistent, loud, and clear. We have now spent over six years, correction, over eight years and $6 million trying to address this issue, and we are ready to submit our study to the FAA requesting a full-time curfew. We have been able to demonstrate that a curfew at the Bob We have been able to demonstrate that a curfew at the Bob Hope Airport will reduce noise impacts on Los Angeles residents by as much as six decibels. And although some general aviation flights would be diverted to other airports, the noise impacts at those airports, at least from a technical standpoint, would be less than one decibel, which is under the FAA's threshold for significance. Unfortunately, I believe that a vote against this proposed curfew or supporting this resolution could be perceived as supporting the residents of one location or the residents of Van Nuys over those that live in the flight paths underneath the Burbank Airport. In addition, it would seem that a vote against Bob Hope's request for FAA approval can only be used in the future to undermine LA World Airport's efforts to impose noise restrictions at its own airports. Unfortunately, anytime that we impose an access restriction, it is likely that pilots will choose to go to other places, and if you support something that says that you can never divert a flight, then you have given the FAA the argument to undermine the entire process. I again would urge you to not support this resolution, and that you would support working with us at the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority and the Mayor of Burbank to seek meaningful nighttime noise relief for the entire valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go out to Van Nuys next, and Stephen Leffert will be our first speaker there. Rick Nightingale will follow him. Good morning, Mr. Leffert.
Good morning. Uh, my name's Steve Leffert. I am Secretary of the Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council. I would like to just read into the record a letter that was written by our neighborhood council after a motion on this particular issue on our June 4 meeting. Dear members of the City Council, the Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council represents approximately 80,000 stakeholders who live, work, and participate in the Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council area, which includes the Van Nuys Airport. On June 4, 2008, the Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council discussed the proposed curfew at Bob Hope Airport and voted unanimously to strongly oppose late-night and early-morning ban on flights from 7:00 PM to, uh, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, now being considered by the City Council. As a direct result of this proposed curfew, more than 33 flights would be rerouted at the Van Nuys Airport during these late-night hours and more to other airports. The resulting shift of noise is unacceptable. The residents living in the areas surrounding Van Nuys Airport need the same protections from noise from late-night takeoffs and landings as residents living near the Bob Hope Airport. As the Neighborhood Council represents the stakeholders in the area directly affected by the shift of this late-night airport noise, we urge you, our City Council, to join the stakeholders in the Lake Balboa community in strongly opposing the proposed curfew and use all the influence you have available to you to make sure such a short-sighted plan, which will merely dump one community's pain into others, is stopped. Uh, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Um, Rick Nightingale is our next speaker. After that will be Don Schultz, also in Van Nuys.
Yes, good morning. Uh, my name's Rick Nightingale. Um, I don't understand why Burbank Airport has been doing this for so many years. As Mr. Alakon, uh, him and my family, we, I didn't know it, but we live right around the corner from each other. My dad built a house in 1948 in Sun Valley. Uh, his mother lived there, I think, from 1954 or something. We put up with the noise of the Burbank Airport for years and years and years. It's been there for years and years and years, and when you turn around and bought your house around there, you got a very good deal at the time when you did buy your house. This is why a lot of people did buy there, because you got a very good deal. Now they turn around and you want it changed because of the noise. There's noise been there all the time. They changed the glide path, I agree with you, uh, but the planes have improved so much, you say, between jet and prop. The props were, years ago, are just as loud, same as Van Nuys Airport when the National Guard was there, when they picked up those C-130s and that stuff when they, when they took off. Those things are so loud, it's unbelievable. And so now, I turn around and, uh, I live over in Northridge by the Van Nuys Airport, now you want to unload the Burbank traffic to Van Nuys. Van Nuys was never a commercial, uh, airport to begin with where Burbank was. So why do you think that you, it pushed to Van Nuys where we're having our same trouble with the, with the commercial jets that they're trying to push the little prop planes out? Um, it's just unbelievable that, that you feel that you would like to do this, and you've got all these surveys and so forth. I mean, like I says, the people bought there, that's why there. Then it's time that, like I did, then it's time to move, uh, if that's the way you feel. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you. Our next speaker is Don Schultz.
Good morning. Um, council members, um, before I give my comments, I'd like to let the council members know, and also possibly the gentleman from the airport at Bob Hope Airport. Congressman Howard Berman does not agree with the concept of shifting noise from one noise-impacted airport to another noise-impacted airport. The congressman does support airport curfews, but this is not the curfew that would work. Uh, the resolution you have before you today goes in a great detail with specific language, and I urge you to support it with unanimous vote. Simply stated, Bob Hope Airport apparently does not see anything wrong with shifting their nighttime noise to Van Nuys Airport in order to effect a night curfew at Bob Hope Airport from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM for their general aviation activity. Van Nuys Airport has long been identified as an airport with a noise problem by Caltrans. Doubling the aircraft activity at Van Nuys Airport during these nighttime hours by diverting flights from Bob Hope Airport is nothing more than environmental injustice, which this council has long opposed over the years regarding dumps and other issues like that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our last speaker is here back in our City Hall chambers, Diane Rosen.
Good morning, council members. I'm Diane Rosen. I'm the Chair of the Encino PLU, a member of the homeowners of Encino and the EPOA, the, uh, Encino Property Owners. So I'm wearing three hats here, and a member of the Airport Committee, the Encino Neighborhood Council. Uh, this resolution has not been adequately vetted by Valley residents. More voices need to be heard, and the issue vetted by more Neighborhood Councils before Los Angeles positions itself as an adversary to the Hope Airport. The, Los Angeles cannot have it both ways. Either Los Angeles supports the airport, uh, noise reduction, or it does not. Lawa will soon bring similar proposal before the FAA, asking for a night curfew at Los Angeles Airport. The addition of the Cardenas Resolution is a strategy that is counterproductive and will not effectively address Valley airport noise issues. The homeowners of Encino, EPOA, and the NC represent thousands of residents living in the San Fernando Valley who are daily plagued by noise from both Bob Hope Airport and, and the Van Nuys. Much of this noise nuisance is due to night operations, particularly business aviation jets involving Lear, Gulfstream, and other Stage 2 and Stage 3 aircraft. Uh, communities, uh, must not take a nimby attitude with regards to night aircraft noise. It is unacceptable for any airport, be it Van Nuys, uh, uh, clearly, uh, we are besieged in the Valley, and every effort must be made to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rosen. That will, uh, close our, uh, comments on this. We have four speakers on the queue, starting with Mr. Lavange, and Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Alakon.
Put me on the bottom of the queue, I want to hear from my colleagues.
All right, Mr. Parks?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would just like to stand, uh, in support of this Cardenas and Smith motion. And Mr. Cardenas isn't here today, but in using, uh, his notes, uh, he'd like to have this in the record. First of all, he is pleased that the Lake Balboa community has come out in support of this position. We should be aware that on June 6, uh, the Mayor of the City of LA also took an opposing view of, uh, the movement, uh, by the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority. Uh, the real issue here is, uh, in the opposition is not that we do not believe that Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena Authority should be moving forward on reducing noise. The conflict is that we don't believe it should be done by transferring noise to other airports. Uh, this is totally inappropriate. Uh, what is believed that should happen is that the City of LA through Lawa should be part of a productive, uh, dialogue, uh, so that, uh, these issues can be dealt with on a regional basis, which is the format of dealing with our airports in general, is the solutions are regional. Uh, it is believed that, uh, this current study, uh, will already predicts if a proposed curfew went into a place, that airports within the region such as Van Nuys, Ontario, LAX would absorb the influx of flights due to this curfew. Uh, today, Van Nuys is currently going through a noise-related study, uh, and expects to take more than 16 additional overnight flights by 2015. Uh, the one airport owned by the City of LA that would welcome additional operations is Palmdale, but it's not mentioned in this study. Uh, Van Nuys Airport, LAX currently work, is working on a Part 161 study to address their regional noise issues. Uh, I believe that the main part of this request is that LAX through Lawa, along with the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority, should work together and find common and effective methods in which net reductions in airport noise impact, uh, should be achieved for residents of Los Angeles metropolitan area and regional areas. And so those are the, the main points, that we don't want to shift the noise. We'd like to have a regional plan on how to reduce the noise.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is a very sensitive issue for all of us. I appreciate the mayors, uh, and, and the folks from, from the communities where this airport is, Burbank and Glendale and, and the Pasadena area. I appreciate their concerns, but folks, we're all in this together. Uh, there are 25 million of us in Southern California, and airport traffic and airport noise is a reality of a megalopolis of this size. I represent two airport-area communities, Los Angeles Big Airport, LAX, and the Marvista area and Venice area of the Santa Monica Airport. We have those problems wherever we have airports. To me, this is simple city nimbyism. It's politics at its most crass level. So if they shut down from 10 o'clock to this, now, where do those planes go? Sure, it'll impact our Van Nuys area, the community there, it will impact, uh, over in Santa Monica, and my community's there, it'll impact LAX. We're all in this together, folks, and therefore I think Mr. Cardenas did the right thing with this motion. I think that we all need to share the pain of the megalopolis when it comes to air traffic. Though I appreciate and respect you, I say vote yes on our motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Alakon.
Members, I agree with Mr. Rosendahl that this is a very sensitive issue. I also agree, uh, with Mr. Parks that we should work toward regional governance. But I've been around here a long time, folks, 15 years. I've been working on Van Nuys Airport, and they haven't moved a damn thing forward at Van Nuys Airport that, that is in concert with the community. The fact of the matter is that the City of Los Angeles does not operate so that Burbank can operate, uh, in, in a cooperative manner, and vice versa. Um, and so, on, on the, the concept of we need to slow Burbank-Pacadena down so that we can work on a regional solution, it sounds great as a concept, but the fact of the matter is, as a pragmatic history, we've never done it. We've never done it. Um, and, you know, I, I, believe me, I've flown out of Burbank as many times as anybody around here, uh, and I've flown before, uh, 7 o'clock to get to Sacramento for a budget meeting or something. But, but the problem that I have with this motion is that we waved it out of committee, and we didn't have the full opportunity to do the research. I just found out about this, and nobody, not, nobody has talked to me about what the implications of this are. Uh, so I'm voting no on this, and I hope that we actually, rather than take a vote on this, I'd like to send it back to committee to get a full hearing, the way it should have been, instead of waving it out of committee and having this, this, this conversation without having the benefit of allowing my staff to do the research to know what position I want to take on this. I agree, there are two sides to this issue. Uh, I think Burbank and, and Glendale have gotten the message, we need to sit down with them and, and work this out. Just the other day, I, I worked with a group to, to talk about, and Wendy Gruehl introduced a year ago, a motion on regional, uh, regional cog. That, this is exactly the kind of thing that that cog would, 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 uh, be well-suited for, but if we stick our finger in their eye, they'll stick their finger in our eye at first opportunity, and that may be the destruction of the cog. Uh, I'm moved that we refer this entire matter back to committee, get the full hearing that it deserves, and hear from the community as well, and allow my staff and myself to get up to speed on what exactly the implications are of, of this recommendation.
President, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, that motion has been seconded.
It's absolutely right in what you just said.
Okay, it's been seconded.
It makes a lot of sense, and I apologize to those cities there with how strong I was about them. You're right, Richard, this is absolutely right. It's a bigger issue than a moment on the council floor. A second, enthusiastic, we should send it back to committee.
Okay, the second, Mr. Lavange.
With the interest of this being Friday, and a motion there for sending it back to committee and have a full discussion, not having the benefit of Lawa sitting here and explaining all issues to it, I will, uh, say, uh, send it back to committee so there's a full discussion, so everybody could understand it. And also, I think the benefit to have Ms. Gruehl here, because I know part of the, uh, flight pattern comes over what would be the 4th district, all of it comes over here, and everybody should have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just as a point of information, colleagues, um, Mr. Mr. Cardenas's office informed the council that the, the reason that the, a vote was proposed for today, I believe, is a federal hearing on Monday. That's just a point of information, not lobbying one way or the other. Um, we have Mr. Rosendahl down for a second time? Yeah, Mr. Lavange?
If it's still working there. If last day's act on Monday, then I think it'd be fair to Los Angeles and fair to Burbank that they go together on it, that whatever, whatever Burbank gets, Van Nuys gets. You agree with that, Mayor? Stand up, Mayor. Okay, the mayor agrees, whatever Van Nuys gets, Burbank gets. Is that what he wants, right? Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I apologize to the cities for, for my outburst there about nimbyism, but I also want to make another point about regionalism. I was made Chair of the Southern California Regional Airport Authority. Mr. Alakon is right about the issues of cooperation, coordination, and regionalism. I know for LAX's purposes, as we modernize LAX, we will pass those costs onto the airlines, and we will see more air traffic out of Ontario, which is what the region has been begging for. We'll begin to see nonstop, direct, frequent, and discounted flights out of Ontario. That needs to happen. That would be a significant regional future point. But all of the communities have to get together, have airports, and they have to sit down in a room and figure out a way in which we work together. We're all in this 25-million megalopolis from Santa Barbara to San Diego together. And again, Richard, thank you for being more thoughtful about this than I was at that point. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have that motion. Mr. Parks?
Let me clarify, on the, my understanding is that it was being waived because of a timing issue for Monday?
That's correct.
And if we miss that timing issue, then what's the end result?
We could have the CLA come forward to tell us the timing if you'd like. I think they, they know, uh, the timing on this. That was, that was the most eager walk to the table I've ever seen.
Yeah. Looked like that deer in the other side.
It was a sideways stumble, we call it. What, would you just let us know the, the timing of this?
Um, we're trying to track down the details on this, um, hearing.
Exactly.
Okay, so, so we don't, you don't know for sure?
Um, there are a couple different types of places where this hearing could be, so we're trying to-
Okay.
Yeah, actually, we, until this very moment, we're not aware that there was a hearing on Monday, and we're trying to figure out if that's a hearing in Burbank to accept comments with staff. Um, to my knowledge, there is no committee hearings, uh, in Congress or anything like that on Monday.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for that information. Mr. Parks, still your time?
Well then, if we could ask that, uh, is Mr. Cardenas back on Tuesday?
Uh, we believe so. Uh, Mr. Parks?
If we can move, uh, send it to committee, if we can bring it back on Tuesday if he's
Mr. Cardenas is back on Tuesday.
Yeah. Well, we can hold it on the desk on Tuesday, and we can vote on, on sending it to a committee then, or we can do it today, either way. We do have the motion still on the desk, so.
I still think we ought to have a hearing in committee, Mr.
So, Mr. Parks, no, we, we know that's your position, Mr. Parks, is suggesting-
I, I would suggest that we hold it on the desk on Tuesday so Mr. Cardenas can speak on his motion. It doesn't, there won't be the committee meetings between now and Tuesday.
The mayor's office just informed me the comment deadline is today.
What's that now?
The, the mayor's office just informed me that the comment deadline is today. That's why it was taken up today.
Okay, well, so jump.
But I think if, if we're in a deadline as far as this council taking a position, then my motion would be we support Mr. Cardenas- my motion would be we support Mr. Cardenas's motion, and with the caveat that, as he stated in his material, that Lawa, as a representative of the city, worked with the authority to come up with a regional response to this issue. So I don't think we could ignore the fact today and not have our position, that we oppose it unless it's modified to include the city of LA in this regional planning. And in regional noise issue. And I think that's what his goal is.
Okay, so you withdraw the Tuesday and and?
That we would support this with the moderation modification, that Lawa in representing the city is part of a regional noise reduction effort with the authority.
Okay, great. Thank you. We have Mr. Labange for a second time, and then Mr.?
Anyone here for the airports departments? You want to sit down? Hi, Jerry.
If I could, just for clarification, the comment period to comment to Burbank closes on Monday. It is not a final comment period for to submit comments to the FAA.
And Mr. Miller, when did we become aware of this? Has the city of Burbank been working independent and not talking to Los Angeles?
Well, we well, we became aware of it when the resolution was introduced and waived out of committee. We have not been asked to do a report on it.
Right, but I mean, has anybody tracked, has anybody from Los Angeles International Airports know that? Do we have liaisons with other airports? Do we know this was there? Is Burbank trying to get something that, and should they have maybe been talking to us so we could have done it together in some ways?
Mark Adams, Los Angeles World Airports. We were aware of this quite a while ago. We've been watching the progress of the Burbank 161 study for a couple of years now, at least. And we did submit, we submitted comments, not expressing oppose or support or anything, but rather simply expressing our opinion on the technical aspects of the studies back in May. And so we've been keeping our eye on this.
Good, so let me ask you, what is best for Los Angeles, including the people who live in North Hollywood? Including the people living in?
I think that's, I I don't, I would say that's a policy decision for the council.
Yeah, and I like the right for the departments to do, I'm okay with that.
No, I would say that the the Burbank study had some deficiencies in it that we pointed out in our letter to them. I think there is merit to opposing this on the basis of the the impact of the the potential impact to the residents around Van Nuys, but I also think that, you know, there's potential benefits to the curfew, as people have pointed out, to people who live over by Burbank, and it's sort of a, you've got, it's it's a, the net plus minus is is really up to the council, I think.
Does Santa Monica, Mr. Rosendahl spoke, Santa Monica Airport, does that have an overnight curfew? Does anyone know?
Santa Monica has a restriction on most of these commercial aircraft already, and?
No, I'm not talking about Southwest. It's not about Southwest, it's about somebody else, and usually small jets, and I don't know, what's it, Mercury Air or whatever it is? Hold the time, I want to have that question asked, does anyone know?
We can't hold time today just because of this thing, but we'll give you some extra, don't we?
Oh, you will? Okay.
Well, not extra in the extra sense, but.
Right, yeah, okay, good.
Imaginarily hold your time.
I don't know, I'm gonna find Mr. Rosendahl, push my button again.
Can I? Can I?
Sorry.
Am I the next one?
We have next Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, well, wait, Jerry, before.
Nice try, Jerry.
Yeah, nice try. Well, you know, as Chair of this committee, I I feel like I need to at least say that part of the reason I was asked by Councilmember Cardenas to waive it out of my committee, it was an unusual request, was because of this timing deadline. But I agree that it has really come to us late, we have not done our due diligence, you know, haven't had this conversation with Lawa, haven't really had these benefits, or, you know, the reason why it's positive versus why it's negative. You made a comment, Jerry, that Monday was the hearing in Burbank?
My understanding is that?
What's the process, and is there another, I guess what I'm asking, is there another opportunity for the city of Los Angeles to weigh in on this issue after Monday, and at what level?
Well, we certainly can comment to the the FAA. I don't know that the mayor has already weighed in the council.
But this is the last, this is the last opportunity for pub for public comment on this decision, is that what, what's the process of of this issue?
There is a a letter in the record from the mayor on this opposing.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Robert Holden, I'm the project manager for the LAX and Van Nuys Part 161 studies. Today just closes the public comment docket for the Burbank Part 161, but I believe the opportunity, as the gentleman said, to comment directly to the FAA, once they have submitted their application to the FAA, still exists.
Well, colleagues, I mean, I think that's our choice. We either take a position today and get our comments in this official public comment time, or we vet it in committee, talk a little bit more about it, and then offer our position as as the council body at the next level. So I I think it's really up to the the will of the body, how we want to weigh in on this.
All right, we have Mr., sorry, Alarcon next.
Members, I think we should move forward very carefully on this issue. That's the main concern I have. The mayor has already weighed in with a letter to the Burbank Airport Authority, that will be on record. The city of Los Angeles, by virtue of our mayor, will have a position of opposition. I'm not suggesting that we support their their closure, I'm not supposing, I'm not proposing we oppose it. What I'm saying is, we have not done our due diligence to make the appropriate decision, or to be strong on our position. And since the mayor is already weighing in, I see no reason for the council to weigh in, because quite frankly, I have issues with the way Lawa operates Van Nuys Airport. And I also have issues with the the competing interests with Burbank and Van Nuys Airport. These are, these are very critical issues. I have issues with the people south of of Van Nuys Airport imposing things on the people north of Van Nuys Airport. I have issues with the the landing patterns at Burbank that go over my district, as opposed to going over the mountains in Burbank. And so there there are many, many issues that have to be discussed, but they are very complicated, very controversial. But Lawa is a critical component, and they are not necessarily carrying the interests of the people of the San Fernando Valley, because they are driven by LAX policy, and and they don't, they're not expanding the the use of Palmdale Airport as fast and aggressively as they should, which I think is a critical element to this problem, whether you're talking about Burbank or Van Nuys Airport. The point I'm trying to make is, I think that the council as a whole individually needs to get much more up to speed on this issue before taking a dramatic position like this within less than 24 hours' notice. I just got this thing today, and I just, I don't appreciate the fact that I, and I've been working on this as a senator, as a councilman, and I can tell you that that this is not something that you can resolve in a matter of a couple of hours, or in fact, with all due respect to my colleagues, trust two council members who introduce a motion and then waive it out of committee, and I don't have the full benefit of of an understanding of what the heck is going on as it impacts my district. So I strongly recommend that we refer this back to committee, let the mayor take the lead at the Burbank level, because if if, I see no benefit to us adding on, I mean, the mayor's gonna gonna make a strong statement, if we take, I'm not suggesting that we take a position to oppose the mayor's position, that would be a disaster in in a lot of different ways. But I do think that it's something that the council should fully explore, because I think there are benefits that could be derived relative to the operation of Van Nuys Airport that we ought to drive and not have necessarily a citywide decision be made on that issue. So for a lot of reasons, I strongly recommend that we refer this back to committee, have a full understanding, weigh in at the FAA if necessary, but more importantly, during the course of that process, I think we will be in a better position to derive benefits for the the people of the San Fernando Valley, whether you're talking about North Hollywood, Sun Valley, Pacoima, Lake Vitoria, Sunland Tahanga, or Van Nuys, Encino, North Ridge, and all the other sites. This is a valley issue. I'm asking you to refer this back to committee, to allow the valley to have greater input to do what is right for the people of the San Fernando Valley.
Thank you. We next have Mr. Labange.
Airport officials, tell me, the noise of the private jets, is that higher than the noise of the commercial jets? By and large, anodally?
Not necessarily. That's a tricky question, because the the phase-out under the Airport Noise Incapacity Act went into effect in in 2000 and got rid of all of the older Stage 2 jets from the commercial fleet. But a lot of the general aviation aircraft were not part of that, and so a lot of those business jets that operate now at Van Nuys and at Burbank do not meet the the newer criteria for for noise. And so those are some of the aircraft that have the most impact at Van Nuys Airport, for instance, and those are the ones that are primary concern to us.
Right, because I don't think it's a, you're not going to see commercial jets land at Van Nuys.
No, commercial jets would not be allowed to be shifted to Van Nuys. It doesn't accept commercial operations there.
So if there's a plane coming late, what happens if a plane's coming late from San Francisco? And what, conceivably, if there was a plane that was left San Francisco Airport at at 9:55, and winds make it, is this a 10 o'clock curfew?
At which airport? At?
Coming into Bob Hope Airport. What would they have to do if it was like 11:05?
Well, the diversion airport for Bob Hope would not be Van Nuys, for instance.
Right, but what if they, you mean, this ban would not allow them to land at 11:05?
Well, the commercial, if it's a commercial flight, it would have to go to another commercial airport that's open 24 hours, like an LAX or an Ontario.
I think there's a regional approach, and I appreciate the mayor and the people of Burbank coming down here, there's a regional approach, the questions here asked that are raised are extremely important to how we do with it, and also what pressure we put on the aviation industry to deal with noise. Just just 50 feet from the end of the runway is the Southern Pacific now, usually Pacific train line. Anybody ever heard of freight train in the middle of the night?
Mm-hmm.
You know, but there's no restrictions on freight trains, right?
Mm-hmm.
But they do make noise, and they deal with it, but sometimes they, there's different type of noise, so all this has an impact on that. Could I ask the chairman of the committee, is the chairman of the committee, chairperson of the committee, is that Ms. Hahn, Mr. President?
It would go to Rules and Government, so it'd be my committee.
Go to Rules and Government? Your committee?
Yes, sir.
How soon could you deal with it?
Our next meeting is June 25th.
June 25th.
But we have been informed that both that LAX and Lawa has confirmed this, that it's just the Burbank section that closes today. So we do have the opportunity from Los Angeles to comment for some time, it sounds like.
Right. So that all being said, would you like to have a little more time to study this and give us an articulate answer, so the impact? So what would be good for Burbank, may help Los Angeles residents who are adjacent to it, but at the same time, we don't want to hurt Los Angeles residents who are adjacent to Van Nuys. That's some thought process you could put together. And does this make sense? And what conceivably in the future will take place at these, are they Stage 4 jets, is that the proper term? When are Stage 4 going to be bye-bye? Or are they ever?
Now, there's no plans to restrict, there's actually no plans to restrict the Stage 3 aircraft from the federal fleet.
Because it's all about noise. It's all about noise. Right. Okay, so I think Mr. Alarcon made a sense, Burbank's application go forth, they made their comments, but if Los Angeles wants to focus on this, there's a committee hearing that Mr. Garcetti could have on this here? I know, well, there's some confusion from the president to the chair of Ms. Hahn's committee, whatever the case may be, but Mr. Alarcon, you support having this in a committee to really look at, to make sure, whatever we do, they can go on what they're doing, their comment is, but we, and the mayor's already voiced his opinion, we could sound this all out, what's best for all of Los Angeles, what's also best out for the north and south of Van Nuys, as well as the north and south of Hope, Bob Hope. Thank you.
Well, I would suggest, colleagues, if we have this this information, that we do have this comment period open vis-à-vis LA's position on this, be happy to to put this into committee. We can also put it over till Tuesday when we have that for sure, we have the exact calendar, we know when the deadline closes for us, and we can get all that information. So it's not to continue it for a vote, per se, on Tuesday, but for us to have full information instead of kind of spinning our wheels and talking a lot about this without knowing exactly what the deadlines are.
I was just gonna say, if it if it comes back to my committee, I would even recommend maybe we have that committee meeting in Van Nuys.
Yeah.
So that?
I'd be happy to 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 put it into your committee, even though we usually go to Rules and Government. Mr. Wesson?
Yeah, Mr. President, I wanted to basically direct this line of, well, not line of questioning, but questioning to you. We still have people that have been waiting here since 10 o'clock.
Correct.
And I would like for us to give them, you know, the awards, because they deserved them, and it just doesn't make sense to me for us to continue discussing this.
I concur.
Right now. And so is, would it be appro, in order to to stop debate, could I move the previous question, or how can we?
Well, technically, having just given a little bit of a speech, no, because if you say some other words, we're not, but if there's no objection to it, I think we can take up your suggestion.
Because it's my understanding.
Unless anybody has to be heard to take this on Tuesday to learn the full calendar, and if necessary, then we'll send it back to committee, as long as we have the time for that.
And thank you, Mr. President. Next time, I'll know not to say anything.
Don't worry, just go straight, straight to move the previous question, and you'd be in business. Mr. Rosendahl?
I don't want to belabor the point to anybody, but just for facts and information, Van Nuys happens to be a general aviation airport. So those that are general aviation after 10 o'clock will go to general aviation airports, which would be either Van Nuys, or would be Santa Monica, or other general aviations. The commercial planes, if they shut it down at 10, will end up going basically to LAX. The truth of the matter is, we're all in this together. If Burbank wants to shut down at 10 in the morning till 7:00 in the morning, then LAX should do the same thing. It's it's the whole issue of planes coming in at 10 o'clock at night. It's pretty simple. You know, Van Nuys Airport is a general aviation airport, the busiest one in America. Santa Monica Airport, that doesn't even want Stage 3 and 4 for safety reasons, I don't want it because of the toxicity to my constituents, it's everybody's issue. But these little communities around us are smart enough to say no to themselves, we, the big city, are the ones who get the brunt of the problem afterwards. It's not rocket scientists here, folks. There's a ying and a yang, what's good for the goose is good for the gang, gander. So we can discuss this again next Tuesday, but we're all in the mess together, and they're just moving forward for their people at the expense of our people. It's a simple story. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so if there's no objection, I believe Mr. Alarcon withdrew his motion?
With the idea that we're not going to take a vote on it, hold it in on the floor until Tuesday, I withdraw my motion to refer it to committee, although I do believe that it should go to committee at some point.
Okay. Without objection?
I support a 24-hour LAX with quieter jets.
We will then take it up on Tuesday. We'll continue that till?
Because it's not always 10 o'clock in Los Angeles.
Tuesday, Sept, Tuesday, June 17. Tuesday, June 17. Thank you all very much. We will return to our presentations now, and like to recognize from the 7th Council District, While he's going up, we have the amending motion for item 3 that has been circulated, so without objection, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment, and on 3, if you'll be kind enough to open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved, forthwith, without objection, and also for folks who are waiting for general public comment, we will be taking that up probably in about 20 minutes. We have about three presentations left, and we've just sent it forthwith, yes.
Could we ask item, thank you. Got it?
Absolutely, we did. No problem. Mr. Alarcon.
Members, first of all, let me apologize to many of the people from Maldef who had to get back to work, otherwise there would be 30 or 40 people here to celebrate the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Funds 40th Anniversary. This is an organization that has been on the vanguard of protecting the rights and rights and opportunities for the Mexican-American community throughout the United States. In their 40 years of history, they have become known as the primary go-to organization relative to issues related to the rights of Mexican-Americans, Latinos, and others. to issues related to the rights of Mexican-Americans, Latinos, and others. But their protection of Latinos and Mexican-Americans is clearly to protect all the citizenry of the United States of America, because fundamentally, it's about our constitutional rights and our Bill of Rights, and those things that make America a democracy that works for everyone. So I am very pleased to present this recognition, this resolution, to the MALDEF for the work that they have conducted. I do want to mention that MALDEF is a national nonprofit organization, and they represent more than 45 million Latinos living in the United States, to try and prevent the obstacles that do occur in a diverse society such as ours, and we are well aware of those challenges, to foster sound public policies, laws, and programs that safeguard the rights of Latinos, and to expand the opportunities for Latinos to participate fully in society and to make positive contributions toward the well-being of our society. It was founded in San Antonio, Texas, in 1968 by Pete Tijerina, Albert Peña, and Roy Padilla. Of course, Tijerina is a very famous figure in the Chicano history of the country, and MALDEF was started in response to the lack of Latino civil rights advocacy group similar to the NAACP, which has the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. So they have taken some prominent cases and have had significant victories, as I shuffle through my notes looking for those. They have certainly have been the premier organization on ensuring equal access to the law for all, particularly in opposing Proposition 187 and 209. They fought successfully to overturn Proposition 187. They...on voting rights issues, they have weighed in at the County Board of Supervisors, creating the first seat, allowing a Latino community to elect a candidate of its choice. And in 2002, in Texas, the second redistricting protected the rights of all minorities from gerrymandering, and led by the congressman in that area, they were successful in protecting the rights of the constituents of that area. They have also protected our language rights. They oppose Proposition 227. They fought for equal access to primary language education throughout the country, and they fought for educational opportunities, equal access to schools in Plyler versus Doe. This is an organization that cares about America. It cares about the well-being of Latinos in terms of defending their rights, similar to the activities of the NAACP's Legal Defense Fund, and in doing so, they protect all of us, and they protect non-Latino and Latino constituents in the United States of America. Most importantly, we need organizations like MALDEF to protect our Constitution. It is always subject to interpretation and reinterpretation, but because of organizations like MALDEF, we hopefully are interpreting the Constitution in a way that is best for our country. So with that, I'd like to present this to their president and general counsel, I believe. Hold on just a second. He says, "That's me." This is...the president and general counsel was appointed to MALDEF in November of 2006. That is John Trasvina...Trasvina, excuse me. Mr. Trasvina began his career at MALDEF in Washington, D.C. as a legislative attorney in 1985. He worked for U.S. Senator Paul Simon as general counsel and staff director for the U.S. Senate Judiciary Subcommittee on the Constitution, and in 1997, President Clinton appointed Mr. Trasvina as special counsel for immigration-related unfair employment practices. As special counsel, he led the only federal government office devoted solely to immigrant workplace rights. I have to share with you an anecdote. Before President Clinton became President Clinton, I had the opportunity to meet with him in a group of about 15 Latinos at East Los Angeles College, and when we asked him the question about his position on immigration, he looked at us and he said, "You know, that's the first time anybody asked me that question. I really don't have an answer for you, and...but I will have a policy in short time." Well, as you can see, Mr. Trasvina became the immigration guy for President Clinton, and I think that was a good appointment. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce the president and general counsel of MALDEF in celebration of their 40th anniversary, John Trasvina.
Just before we hear from you, Councilmember Reyes would like to add his good wishes as well. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank my colleague, and thank you for being here with us today. You know, in my district, and I see this in many parts of the city, because of the raids and this whole trend of how families are being broken up. I've been to Valmont and the schools in their city, and this is a very real experience. I had a parent who came to me and said, "My daughter, who's 16, is running away," and she started going through a process of self-mutilation, and she wanted to know what was going on, and her father, who had been working, had been taken by the INS and taken all over the country. And this is a daughter who missed her father, and now is in a place where she wants to know what's going to happen to the family. And she's an American. The mother's an American. So what we're doing to our kids and our families today is just...it's not the America that I would like to think we have. So I appreciate your presence here, because I needed to share these thoughts with you in public, and for those who are listening, because what's happening to our kids, they're acting out. They feel they've been abandoned by this country, that they've attacked their families, and that their whole social family structure is falling apart, because someone has the audacity to take them away and take them to another place in such a way where it's just inhumane. That type of activity occurred in other countries in other periods of time, but we were very, very nonchalantly turned apart families like this. So I really believe MALDEF is playing a significant role. We have to figure as legislators how we amplify the situation, how we defend our youth and our families, because you have a Spanish learning, because you have the color of skin of a certain tone. It does not give anyone the right to tear apart the families. So I thank you for being here. I need to share that with you, and I hope we can highlight these kinds of conditions and amplify this in such a way where the general public understands how they're turning up our youth and how they're penalizing our families. But thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Reyes, and also thank very much Councilman Alarcon, and we are very proud residents of Councilwoman Perry's district in that seventh and spring. She has been so helpful and so welcoming, as that district has changed over the years since we have been there. We're greatly appreciative of all of her efforts there and all of the efforts here. I am proud to be joined by our chief administrative officer, Gina Montoya, and Aracelis Simeon Luna, who runs our Parents School Partnership Program. I will be brief. We are pleased to be with you to celebrate our 40th anniversary, but at MALDEF, with the legal skills we use, with passion and vision and dedication to look at the next 40 years of the Latino community, and right here in Los Angeles, the capital of Latino America, the issues that the councilmen raises are no more important here than anywhere in the country. The future of the community is the future of California and the nation. As we look at 2009, the year of education for the census, 2010 for enumeration, and 2011 and 2012 for empowerment, and as we have been able to...sometimes we do sue the city of Los Angeles, but we know, and we've done that on redistricting, we've done that in other areas, but we know that today, we have many friends and a common vision for the future of our community and of the nation. Looking at 2020, the children today in kindergarten are going to be the graduating class of the year 2020. The work we do in Parents School Partnership Program makes sure that we're going to close the graduation gap and close the many gaps in educational inequities, and certainly looking in the years ahead to empower the Latino community. We are grateful for this token of appreciation of our work, and we will continue. It means a lot to our staff, not only here in Los Angeles, but around the country. We will continue to be dedicated and vigorous for the Latino community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Weezer would like to...Mr. Weezer wanted to add his good wishes, too, and don't worry about those lawsuits. Some of us wouldn't be here were it not for them, so thank you. Mr. Weezer?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Congratulations on your 40th year. I just walked in the room, but I'm sure we all talked about it, the wonderful accomplishments you have done, and to have this organization its birth in 1968, when so many other things were happening in the country, and the work it has done to now, you see a lot of significant progress, whether it's in the area of protecting people's civil liberties and civil rights or immigration. There's been so much done, and I want to thank you for that, because your voice is certainly needed. A lot of times, for those of us who do believe in the ideals that MALDEF is working on as government officials, we're kind of working within the system to do things, but your voice is needed to really prod the government, prod this country in a way that elected officials cannot sometimes. So I'm excited to see your leadership now, after Antonia Hernandez's leadership for a long time, where she brought national attention to MALDEF and made it premier organization throughout the United States. And I want to thank you as well. I once did an internship at MALDEF after working for the Ford Foundation for a summer. I had two months to spare, and I went to volunteer with Antonia Hernandez. We worked on a Latino response to the civil disturbance of 1992, and it was a very interesting time, not only for MALDEF, as it continued to provide a voice for Latinos, but it was a leader in making sure that attention was brought to South LA in terms of what was really happening there in terms of the racial issues and an issue that certainly we continue to address to the city of Los Angeles. So thank you. Congratulations, and we need your voice more now, more than ever, and louder, and we congratulate you, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
In closing, I just wanted to mention, I'm very pleased that we are also joined by Gina Montoya, the chief administrator officer, and particularly Aracelis Simeon Luna, who is the National Parents School Partnership Director. Her efforts, along with MALDEF, are focused on organizing parents to better understand their rights, but also their responsibilities. One of the first things we hear as elected officials when we go to community groups is, "Why aren't the parents taking care of their children?" And that's one of the primary reasons given for why children aren't doing well in our school system. But the fact of the matter is, there's a cultural divide, there's an educational divide, there's a technology divide, there's the reality that many parents feel that their role is not to be at the school, but rather to support values at home. It's a cultural issue, and so MALDEF is taking leadership, much like the mayor and the city of Los Angeles, in trying to reach out to the school district, specifically targeting a priority of organizing the parents, just as MALDEF. So I think it's no surprise that Ms. Simeon Luna comes out of the LA area where she did exactly that, organizing parents, and we're glad she's continuing her work at MALDEF. Thank you so much for the time, and again, we celebrate MALDEF's 40th anniversary.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to recognize from Council District 11, Mr. Rosendahl for our next presentation, and as he's coming up, Mr. Labons wanted to recognize from the audience.
Yeah, members of the council and also our distinguished guests here, we have a very distinguished group of women who took the MetroLink down from Simi Valley. I met them over at Felipe's months ago and said, "Come to our city hall. Please stand and be recognized by the city council, our friends from Simi Valley."
Good morning, everybody. This is a great moment, and as we give out these presentations, we're always giving them to groups that are making a huge difference. This is a group that's been making a huge difference, frankly, since 1977. It's called Communities in School. It's the nation's largest dropout prevention organization, with its sole purpose to champion the connection of needed community resources with school campuses, to help young people stay in school and properly develop their talents. Today, Community in School serves nearly 2 million children in 27 states, as well as the District of Columbia. In identifying the indispensable link between learning and leadership, Communities in School forges vital one-on-one relationships between students and volunteers, who serve as tutors, mentors, and role models, recognizing the potential for greatness in each and every student, and tapping into the potential with encouragement, order, support, and respect. Under the leadership of Bud Jacobs, who's an old friend of mine when he was the principal of Venice High, a young Adam who lived at my home, wanted a skateboard and wanted the school to do things, we banged on the principal's door, and Bud was right there for us. You know, he, in CD11, Communities in Schools has now opened a branch in West Los Angeles, with its primary underwriting coming from the leadership of creative artist agencies. The CAA, folks, is deeply involved. Communities in Schools in West Los Angeles is serving the student population of Venice High School, as well as Hamilton High School. They are continuing their mission through cultivating partnerships with teachers, school administrators, parents, social service providers, local government leaders, religious leaders, business leaders, and community volunteers, and the students themselves, to assure having the talents of our nation's next generation of leaders fully developed. I had the pleasure about six months ago to go to a fundraiser in Bel Air, where there were some incredible ladies there that had put a lot of money and a lot of energy and a lot of support behind it, and saw Bud there, and I said, "Oh, my God, Bud, we need to share this with everybody in our great city about the great organization." So it is an honor for me to present to Bud and the people right behind me, Communities in School, this resolution.
Bud?
Thanks, Bill. And I want to, on behalf of the 150 students that we've served this year at Hamilton and Venice, and the 300 that we'll be serving next year, want to thank you for recognizing our work with dropout prevention, which is a national crisis in this country. The fact that 6,000 young people a day drop out of school is the kind of issue that has driven us to work with schools on the west side of Los Angeles and throughout the whole city. I'm joined today by our board president, Donna Weiss, who's also a national board member with Communities in Schools. I also have with me Josephine Ruffin, one of our staff members, Dana Henry, one of our staff members, and our most important person this morning, who's on her way back to school to finish her finals, and Helica Trujillo, who's a ninth grader at Venice High School. I want to thank you for recognizing the work we're doing in the area of mentoring, tutoring, but just that one-on-one relationship with these young people who at risk of not graduating from school, that we give them the kind of support they need to get through their entire high school career, and we cannot, as adults, stand by and watch these kids make mistakes by not finishing high school. And Bill and Mark Antonio, thank you very much for recognizing our efforts, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, and before you leave, before you leave, sir, before you leave, Mr. Weezer would like to add his good wishes, and you might recognize this guy over here, too, Jose Sigala. Remember him from detention?
Yeah, I do remember him.
Okay, just to make sure.
I saw too much of him.
All right, there you go.
It's good to see him again.
Mr. Weezer?
I lead, too.
He mouthed it something. Your detention was very, very successful.
Thank you very much.
Well, Bud, congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for bringing this great program and Bud Jacobs into the chambers. You know, this is a guy, when the whole issue of dropouts for the city of LA has gotten more highlighted in the last few years, but this is a guy who's been working on this for a long time, and he's dedicated. We would go to football games, and he's there. He knows these kids by names, and that's the type of personal attention that it takes to make sure that our kids stay in school. There was a USC study that showed that, and asked our students, "Why are you dropping out?" They said, "Well, one, I go to these large schools, and I don't feel like I know anyone there." And Bud and his group of community schools are giving these kids that personal attention that they need. The other reason they cited is because they feel like what they're learning in high school has nothing to do with what they're going to do later on in life, and this group, along with Bud, has been doing this for decades to make sure that our kids are getting interested in the types of things that will make them want to stay in school. So thank you, Bud, and if you think about what one measurement we could have on our schools, whether we're doing our job or not, it's not necessarily the standardized test, it's whether they stay in school and get that high school diploma to either go to college, a technical school, whatever it may be, and you guys have been doing that work for a long time. Thank you so much, and we've got a lot more work to do ahead of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And congratulations to you for helping stock our public schools, the new baby. Congratulations.
Thank you. For our next presentation, I'd like to recognize from Council District 15, Councilwoman Janice Hahn.
I can still say good morning. Two minutes. Good morning, everyone, and I'm very pleased today to be a part of this next presentation. We're here honoring women in film. We're here honoring Women in Film. This is a group of women who are committed to helping other women succeed in film and media professions. They do a number of things like assist independent filmmakers, provide internships and scholarships, hold events and seminars to provide information, and help create public service announcements for various organizations. And I want to, I wanted to recognize them today because of a PSA that they produced for an organization that you have heard me talk about all the time, and that's GAAP, the Gang Alternatives Program. As you all know by now, I am a strong believer in investing in our kids at an early age to keep them from joining gangs in the first place. GAAP goes into the fourth grade classes and gives our kids the tools that they need to say no to joining gangs in the first place. And I believe, as does everyone involved with GAAP, that we have a chance of growing up, finally, a generation of kids that will choose not to join a gang and that someday we may see gang violence ended in Los Angeles and other places. But like all nonprofits, GAAP is always looking for more resources so that they can continue this mission, which is why the help of Women in Film to help to produce this PSA was so greatly, greatly appreciated. I want to take a couple of seconds to show this PSA right now, so roll the tape. Big screen.
These are my shoes.
Oops.
Gang Free. Go to gangfree.org. Make the right choice.
That is a great piece. As you can see, it's, really can speak to, I think, all, all generations actually, but it really speaks to the kids, which is, I know, part of why you did that. I'd like to have some of the members of Women in Film speak right now. We have Director Karen Lavender, we have Producer Romel Foster Owens, and we have PSA Program for Women in Film LA, Bonnie Spence. Would you like to come up and say a few words? Whatever order you want.
First of all, it is our honor today to be here and I speak on behalf of Women in Film and everything that we've achieved with GAAP and so many other charities that we've worked with. The PSA program was designed to help women hone their craft in film and what better way to do that than to serve our community doing PSAs? Every year, we only make four PSAs. GAAP was chosen last year because of everything that they do and we so believe, so believe in what we all need to achieve throughout LA together.
Thank you.
We're thrilled to be here today.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Karen Lavender. I'm the Director of the Public Service Announcement. I'm actually from South Africa where gang violence is really high and criminality is really high and me and my family have all had personal experience with violence and it was very close to my heart to actually produce, to direct this PSA and make sure that people in Los Angeles get the message and are able to help their kids to get on the right track instead of the wrong track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Romel Foster Owens and I'm the Producer of the project and we are so delighted to be here. We really, really, really want to urge all of the council people to get behind the Gang Alternatives Program because they are targeting fourth and fifth grade kids before they make that decision of which way they're going to go and they're helping them make positive decisions. And you'll see by the PSA, it is all geared towards positive decisions and reinforcements. Most of the kids that are in that PSA are part of the Gang Alternatives Program with the exception of a few of the women, with the exception of the main person is a screen actor, skilled actor. We donate our time to make that happen. We have a budget so small, it's probably your lunch budget. But the whole entire Hollywood community comes in and helps us from Kodak Film giving us the film, Panavision or Clermont Cameras giving us camera packages, Talis Technicolor processing that. So it is really, really an important event and when we get done with it and everybody behind me has volunteered their time to work on these, we have professional people in the industry, this is a $300,000 package that is being given to the Gang Alternatives Program. And we are so excited to be a part of them because they're incredible. They're incredible. So when you are voting for money and stuff, throw it their way. Serious business. And if you have any nonprofit organizations who are in need of a public service announcement, our deadline for applications is July 12th, July 11th. Very important to do that. Thank you so much. We appreciate this honor.
Thank you very much. Also here today is the GAAP Executive Director Doug Seemark, his staff Sue Ann Abina, and Board Members Irene Mendoza, Elise Swanson, Doris Canizales. And I want to thank all of you for being here and I really want to thank Women in Film. What a great coming together of very smart, talented, articulate, gifted, creative women to come together and do something so positive and so exciting and meaningful. It's really a pleasure for me to honor Women in Film with this certificate of commendation. It is with great pleasure that I commend you for your commitment to empower, promote, and mentor women in the entertainment and media industries and thank you for your work on GAAP's first public service announcement. I know all of us involved with GAAP believe that everything we do saves lives and so I don't know if you'll ever know the impact and the, and the powerful effect that this PSA will have on the next generation of young people in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And our next presentation will be Councilmember Jose Weezer from Councilmember, I mean, Council District 14.
Would this be the appropriate time to indicate that the Council General and his lovely wife did take Sampson, adopted him into their family? And maybe you remember and can pronounce how they changed his name?
Yeah, I think they renamed him Obregon.
Which means Sampson?
It's the same city where the Council General was born and in Spanish, yeah, it means Sampson.
Okay.
Congratulations on your perfect record and we're going to start a new Council General Adoption Program, I think. They all come, so we've got lots of dogs waiting for them.
Okay. I should have to sort of get further, but you want to go in the back? Okay, why don't you guys come in the back?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And now I get to do something that's the favorite part of my job and that is to recognize our young people. And in Highland Park, we have a number of very talented young people who are doing some tremendous work to not only show off the great talents they have in art, but also to show off their ideas about how to better beautify their communities. And each year in Highland Park, a contest is given out to the youngsters in their area so that they could give their ideas about how to beautify the community through art. And each year, we bring them here to recognize the talent and to show the rest of Los Angeles these great ideas that these youngsters have come up with. First, I want to thank all the organizations who make this possible each and every year and they work hard and it's a lot of work to work with a number of schools to get to this point. So first, let me point out the Kiwanis Club and we're joined today by Mr. Heinrich Kiefer, the Kiwanis President and the past President of the Historic Highland Park. Thank you for being with us. Also, Adis Santiago from Hathaway's, thank you for being with us as well. Somewhere back, there he is. And we also had help with, from the Historic Highland Park Day but Council, the Luther Burbank Builders Club. And now, if you would join me in recognizing the winners for this contest, we have a winner that will be the grand prize winner that will be announced at the end, but first, I wanted to recognize the elementary school winners from second grade. Our second place winner is Corina Rose Jimenez from Buchanan Elementary School. Congratulations, Corina. Where's Corina? All right, Corina. Congratulations. I think that certificate's bigger than she is. We also say that about Mr. Wesson around here, so. We also have the first place second grade winner is Jacqueline Belinda Bernabe from Buchanan Elementary School. Congratulations.
Is that here?
Is that here? Okay. The third through fifth grade winner, second place winner, Evelyn Rosales from Aldama Elementary School. Evelyn? Congratulations. Congratulations. There you go. Our first place winner from third or fifth grade, Francine Aguilar from Monte Vista Elementary. Francine? Good job. And our middle school winners, our second place winner Andrea Rendon from Luther Burbank Middle School. Andrea? She couldn't come? There she is. Our first place winner, Miriam Pribesca from Luther Burbank Middle School. Miriam? And now on to high school, our second place winner, Ana Teresa Pribesca from Franklin High School. And are you guys related? Yes, sisters, huh? All right, there you go. Thank you so much. Our first place winner from high school is Natalie Martinez from Franklin High School. Natalie?
Yay!
And now, ladies and gentlemen, please help me in recognizing the grand prize winner for the Highland Park Beautiful Poster Contest for 2008, Francine Aguilar. Congratulations. You get two of them. Thank you. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to hear a little bit from Francine Aguilar, our grand prize winner for 2008. Francine?
And after Francine speaks, I know Mr. Reyes wants to add his good wishes, but go ahead Francine, let's hear from him first. You can move the microphone down just a little bit. Mr. Weezer, if you'd be kind enough to move the microphone down a little bit so we can hear.
Sure, thank you.
There we go.
Good morning. My name is Francine Aguilar and I'm 10 years old. I go to Monte Vista Elementary School in Highland Park. I'm in fourth grade, going to fifth. I would like to talk a little bit about my poster. This poster contest meant a lot to me because I really wanted to create how beautiful Highland Park could actually look without graffiti, trash, and debris. I showed people working together, planting more trees and flowers. I also showed kids and adults recycling cans instead of throwing them out on the street. I drew a lady walking her dog in a park with a leash and a bag for his leftovers and if he were walking by, it's nice to see a fresh, clean, and clear water fountain. I think it's important to keep our community clean so we can live in a safer and nicer neighborhood. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come visit City Hall and also thank you for choosing my poster as a grand prize winner. Thank you.
Wow. Congratulations and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, thank my colleague, Councilman Weezer. The Highland Park is divided in two and I'm very fortunate to be able to work with Councilman Weezer on many of our projects as one community. So my hat goes off to him because I think it's great that we're able to recognize our youth. It shows his former role as school board member. He's penetrating the school system, but most of all, he's giving our youth a sense of pride for our community. I'm hoping that the families that are listening to this from Highland Park can appreciate the perspective of our young people and that as adults, we can demonstrate the type of behavior that continues to improve Highland Park. You know, Highland Park, there's pockets, we're up to about 25,000 people per square mile. The city average is 6,000, 7,000. So there's a lot of people in Highland Park and that means we need that much more effort to keep it clean. So thank you, young folks. Congratulations, future artists, future professionals, and I'm hoping you can bring your families back to City Hall. And I think Councilman Weezer, they're going to go up in the tower maybe?
We'll take them up to the tower.
Fantastic. You'll be able to see the neighborhood from up there and enjoy a great time. So welcome to City Hall. Congratulations. More power to you.
Thank you.
President, I just wanted to show off the poster, Francine's poster. This is the winning entry and the grand prize winner, very talented woman here and the very talented kids. Congratulations again.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, and congratulations to all of our winners. We'll now go to our general public comment. We've had some very patient folks out there in the audience, starting with Jocelyn Giaga Rosenthal from Historic Filipino Town.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here today. We bring you good tidings from Historic Filipino Town and want to give you positive update of, on your unanimous action that you took on August 2nd, 2002 proclaiming the geographic, the area as Historic Filipino Town. We're here to invite you to our August 2nd festival. We know it's kind of early, but we hope you'll put it on your calendar. The festival will be kicked off, will start with a 5K run and I guess this is just part of our wanting to share with you the explosion of healthy developments in your city of Los Angeles as represented by the development in our community. And a traveling Smithsonian exhibition will also be opening as part of this festival. So we have our banner here. Oh, oh, I see.
We have a policy where you can't block the audience, so if you want to bring it in, we can get a close-up, but bring it in a little bit and we'll, we'll get some assistance and we'll bring it in there.
Oh, thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Just put it a little to the side and we'll get a camera shot from over on the side so people know. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay. Well, this was just it. We will be following up with an email that we sent each of your offices and we would like you to join our 5K run. This is, we will have 100 of these banners hanging in Historic Filipino Town from July 4th to August 6th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it and we'll get a shot over there if we can from Channel 35. Got a nice shot of the Historic Filipino Town Festival and the 5K run walk and we appreciate all the good work and hope to see as many people there as possible. There we go. And we'll make sure that we get that running on our Channel 35 ads as well so that people know about that. Thank you all very much. Our next speaker is Arnold Sachs. After that will be Aovi.
Good afternoon. Again, I'm losing time. If you insist on creating a seating arrangement that forces us to sit in the back, please don't eliminate my time if I have to sit back there because of that. But that's a different thing. Actually, it's very interesting today, the way you circumvented the rules for withholding a call for quorum until 11:10, 40. So in the future, I hope that there is no more adjournments because you can't reach a quorum at a quarter after 10:00 like you've done in the past by having your presentations...
Just as a point of clarification, we'll hold your time there. There is no abrogation of the rules whatsoever to do that. Fighting presentations, we begin before quorum is established. That's the way we've always done it and that's not in violation of those rules. Thank you.
But you call the meetings a quarter after 10:00. That's a call for quorum. Is that correct, sir? So if you, if you have your presentations and then you call for quorum later, that's a violation of the rules.
It is not.
Call for quorum is quarter after?
Sir, for presentations, you do not need a quorum. It is not a formal part of the meeting. It is a recognition done by the city to people that are here. Please go ahead.
Okay. No point. Also, in deference to use Councilman Mr. Also, in deferencies, Councilman Mr. Wezar, please remember that there's also members of the public that want to speak so that it's not just people in the presentations...
The speaker should be speaking to the council as a whole, not the individual council members.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Wezar made a motion to move the argument that you had for item number 12 because there were people making presentation, that there were presentations that needed to be made. So I'm addressing Mr. Wezar because he made that motion. If you, sir, had made the motion, then I'd address you. Please remember, there's a public that'd like to make comments also. Okay? That's the point I'm trying to make again. I'm losing my time. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your answers.
If you'd like a few extra seconds, we'd be happy to give them to you. Okay? Eauvi is our next speaker. Rick Nightengale will be next.
Free metered parking for veterans. You know, I wonder if that means less money to help the truly underprivileged veterans who kind of don't afford a car. I hope your concern for democracy goes beyond lip service and token gestures. The city council should voice in opposition to the mishandling of the same-sex marriage issue. While I believe the California Supreme Court's ruling was both fair and good, the decision to not stay the ruling is a bad one. Many people have taken the trouble to get the initiative on the ballot. They did so after finding out that what they did in 2000 with Prop 22 was insufficient to get what they wanted. True, they want to discriminate against same-sex marriages. But do you value resorting to democratic processes to resolve deeply passionate issues? It's been eight years. Let's find out what the majority of the voters want right now. The California legislature is willing to give most of the benefits to same-sex domestic partners that is currently given to married people. As such, circumventing the democratic process doesn't give enough good to justify all the harm that such circumvention can do. Think about the legal chaos that's likely to come about. The Office of Vital Records has not facilitated giving an option for people to specify their gender. So if in November 2008, it should pass the resolution to limit marriage, then not only the 20,000 couples who are same-sex will be affected, but also 100,000 or so cross-gendered couples will need to have their marriage registrations revalidated. I've sent a longer email to many of the council members, and I will provide a hard copy to the cloak over here. And hopefully, some of you will look into this issue. And, you know, maybe at the very least, make sure that that's an option to specify your gender on the forms. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments. And just as a point of information, all marriage issues are handled through the state and the county, so the city has no formal jurisdiction. But we'd be happy to look at any documentation that you have. Rick Nightengale in Van Nuys is our next speaker, and then Zuma Dog. Mr. Nightengale? Are you in Van Nuys? All right, Mr. Dog, come on forward. The microphone's yours.
Thank you, City of Los Angeles. My name's Zuma Dog, Mayor in '09. Take back the city. We'll be talking about the Neighborhood Council racketeering debacle that took place throughout the city last night. But first, Rick Nightengale, who I came to see, who I'm such a fan of, he told me, and I'm a big fan of Councilmember Smith lately, I hope it's not blown over Doug Tripp telling Mr. Nightengale that he doesn't have the right to speak with Councilmember Smith. I'd like to remind everybody that, yes, indeed, he does. And just for saying that, I sure hope he gets the meeting as promised. I'd also like to mention for the record, Councilmember Han should never wear that again, ever, what she's wearing today. No offense, it looks terrible on TV. You'll thank me later. Uh, excuse me, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Please lower your voice, Mr. Dog. This will be your first warning. Thank you.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. I'm trying to just make sure it gets there. Thank you. Now let's talk about the Neighborhood Council elections. And a red spot will be joining me in a possible lawsuit. I think there's racketeering RICO violations that took place yesterday. You had 12-year-old kids voting at 10:00 a.m. The teachers, campus teachers, gave a memorandum to students with a voting slate, sent them to the polls at 10:00 a.m. The polls didn't open until 1:00 o'clock. Adults were not allowed to go on the polls until 3:00 p.m. That's outrageous that the kids are getting, 12-year-olds are giving voting slates and said, "Hey, vote." And it gets much worse than that. And you can go to my website to save time here, zoomatimes.com. But it's, the whole NC system, I say boycott. And I say that a lot of people are going to be going down. It's RICO racketeering violations throughout the city with this Neighborhood Council system. It's coming to an end, and I hope it doesn't drag too many of you down. And that is my opinion, damn straight on that one. And so I'd like to remind everybody since, oh, Eric, item 13, the city clerk didn't have it in time. Can you redo 13? There was no special agendas, and I heard Jan Perry say, "No cards." I had it. I don't think the clerk made it in time. I'd appreciate that. Zuma Dog, take back the city.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. I was informed by the clerk that we received that about 10 minutes after we had taken the vote. So pursuant to those rules, unless there's somebody who moves to reopen, we won't be able to. But we appreciate your comments, as always, today for a general public comment. With that, that clears, I think the agenda's cleared. Next order of business?
Mr. President, there are motions for posting referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, if we could please rise for adjourning motions. Do we have adjourning motions, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Mary Ann Mitchell, who passed away on June 12. She was the president, CEO of COPS, also chairman of the National Black Business Council and former chairperson of the Black Business Association. She passed away due to a tragic pool accident on the morning of June 8. She also played a major role in the 8th district in bringing a program called Break the Cycle to Crenshaw High School, where it basically created a platform for youth to understand that they could break the cycle of illiteracy, gang violence, and a variety of other issues. Her funeral services are currently pending. I'd also ask that we adjourn in memory of Minister Wynette Patrick. She was one of our outstanding leaders, the member of one of our local churches. She's a lecturer, a teacher, counselor, and also a mentor. She's the wife of Minister Benny Patrick. And also, she leaves her daughters Brianna and Natalie Patrick. Services will be Saturday, June 14 at Gantamere Christian Love Church located at 9626 Avalon.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alakon?
I'm saddened to ask that we adjourn, and I ask Councilman Garcetti to join in this adjourning motion for, in the memory of Alexander Raul Aldanya. Alex, as he was known, was born on August 27, 1988, in the city of Los Angeles. He was fatally shot on Friday, June 6, in Hollywood after a verbal confrontation. He's a native Andalino. Alex grew up in Echo Park. He was only 19 years old when he died. He graduated from John Marshall High School in 2007, was a good student, and was very passionate about his music. His friends knew him as a great musician and a great friend. He was the drummer of a punk rock band, IFM, I Fight Me. I don't know what that means, but sometimes in the council, we understand what that means. But he loved playing music and would often spend hours at a time practicing with his band on the very same Echo Park block on which he grew up. Alex has been described by his family as a sweet boy and honest and respectful young man. His sister Natalie remembers how expressive he was to his loved ones, how easy it was for him to show how much he cared for his family and friends. He always went out of his way to help others. And Natalie is the next-door neighbor of my wife and I, and we particularly feel sad for her. And so that's why we introduced this adjourning motion. I also joined with Councilmember Garcetti in concert with the LAPD to request a reward motion for the capture of his killer. He's one of four brothers and sisters. Alex had plans to join the Coast Guard and was excited about being able to contribute to the community. He was looking forward to beginning a career in public service. Alex lived two houses down from where he grew up in Echo Park. He loved all the things about Echo Park. And he and his friends would spend his time enjoying the community and the unique character of the neighborhood. He was a gifted young man whose life was tragically cut short. He will be missed tremendously by his family and friends. And the services will be as follows. The viewing will take place on Sunday, June 15, from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Gruman Mortuary at 8:30 West Washington Boulevard in Los Angeles, at Washington and Norwood. The mass will take place on Monday at La Placita Olvera Church in downtown Los Angeles at 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Alex is survived by his mother Gladys, his father Nelson, his brother Edgar, and his sisters Starr and Natalie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon. And we'll add Mr. Labange to that as well. And it's a big loss for the Echo Park community. Thank you for your work on that. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I want to thank everybody for coming down and for watching today. We will next be in session on the 17th, Tuesday of June. Hopefully, the Lakers will still be alive. And we hope you have a great weekend, everybody.